I'd like to call the meeting to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act of P L nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one. Adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicants, professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into the microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Thank you, and would you call the roll?
Cheryl Bethia?
Here.
Rich Prokanic?
Here.
Joel Reese and Alan Rich asked to be excused. Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepherd?
Here.
Basim Verdas?
Here.
Elizabeth Clarkin?
Here.
And Chairman Thomas?
Here. For the regular, for the rest of the agenda up to the hearings, I'm going by the agenda on my phone, which was supposed to be, I guess, the updated one. So, regular meeting minutes, February third, two thousand twenty-two, need a motion.
I'll move it. Second. Did you want me to mention, did you want me to mention about Si Dad being carried first?
Okay, if you want to do it first or after this part of it, does it make a difference?
Whatever you want to do.
Call the roll on these, and then we'll switch down to that.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
No, you were voting on the minutes.
Oh, yes, yes.
Did I call the roll as well?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I saw.
I'm sorry, I'm sleepy. We're all a little rusty.
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay, skipping down to the last item on the agenda, Si Datamandure Incorporated, Z B A nineteen oh 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 thirty-seven. If you're here for that, the preliminary major, final major site plan with C and D variances, in which the applicant wants to construct a twenty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy square foot place of worship at five eighty-three South Middle Wish Road Somerset, block thirty-six point oh one, lot six point oh three, in the A-zone, is not going to be heard this evening, and soon as I get it back up.
It's carried to?
It will be carried to?
May fifth.
May fifth.
With no further notification needed.
Okay, that application will be carried to May fifth, no further application. It'll be, that, that means, if you have any doubt, there's not going to be any letters in the mail for anybody.
And that meeting?
This is the notification.
That meeting will be held here, in person, at seven thirty on May fifth.
That's, that meeting will be here in person, keep our fingers crossed, on May Regular meeting minutes, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll move it.
Second. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Rich Prokanic?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Resolution, Anita Cohen, C B A twenty-one oh 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 twenty-three.
I'll move.
Second. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Rich Prokanic?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. And then Malgor Zada Seraphin, Z B A twenty-one oh 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 twenty-five.
I'll move.
Second. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay, moving to the hearing section, one moment before that, again, I just, I wanted to mention at the beginning of the hearing, it's nice to welcome everybody back to the meetings in person, much, much different, much more efficient than it's been on the computer. I know, I'm pretty sure we all look forward to that. First hearing, Cedar Hill Holdings, L L C, actually the only hearing this evening, Z B A nineteen oh 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 four-one. The applicant seeking a D variance to allow operation of a summer day camp at one fifty-two Cedar Grove Lane Somerset, block four twenty-four point twelve, lot six point oh three, in the R forty zone. Mr. Lanford, before he begins, I'm taking this opportunity again to recuse myself from this hearing. This is on the advice of Mr. Reagan, our board attorney, in spite of the fact that the applicant's attorney initially voiced no objections to my being part of this hearing. I have not been part of these hearings. I don't intend to be part of the hearings for this application, and I want that publicly understood because there is an avalanche of social media going on around this township criticizing the actions of this board for permitting me to conduct these hearings and be a part of it. That has not happened, and it's not going to happen. And we'll happily turn the gavel over now to Mr. Shepherd, who will be quite capable handling everything also. Thank you.
This is my chance to have the gavel. Oh, I'm not going to hammer it. I, I'll now turn this over to Mr. Lanford. Tonight, we were supposed to hear from two more witnesses, Elizabeth Dolan and Brian?
Kevin O'Brien?
Kevin, Kevin O'Brien, right. And, but I think something else is happening.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and for the record, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. Since our last hearing, which was an aborted hearing, we have had numerous meetings with the township staff. It was apparent that, as a result of the testimony at the hearing concerning the summer camp, that there were serious concerns raised by the township staff and by board members concerning the operation or the handling of the arrival and departure of the camp attendees. In addition, what we were faced with was that we had prepared two traffic reports during the height of the pandemic, when we started this application, when the numbers were not what the numbers were in two thousand and twenty-one. The township conducted a traffic study in August of two thousand twenty-one, which had significantly higher numbers, and the numbers are the numbers. But it is apparent that when comparing what the township found as far as operations and what best Dolan found are fairly inconsistent, are fairly inconsistent with each other because of the pandemic. In addition, in reviewing operations in two thousand and twenty-one, the summer camp was still under a protocol where the children were being tested when they came to the site before they can enter the facility, which impacted the traffic. So during our discussion, we really felt that all of those reports, while relevant, don't jive with each other. And what we really need to do is come up with some protocols going forward, which would hopefully deal with the issues that were raised by township staff in their T R C report, were raised by Mr. Mazzi in some of the emails that he forwarded to us, and which were also raised by Ms. Dolan in her analysis of the operations. And what we did was, we came up with a driveway operations report, which I would like to mark as?
A what kind of report?
We call it a driveway operations.
Driveway?
Driveway.
Driveway, okay.
Driveway, yes. Operations report, and I will mark that as A one, if that's okay with Mr. Reagan?
Today's date?
And today's date.
Now, Mr. Lanford, before you go any further, I, I would like to make sure that the applicant, Mr. G A L E N Smith, is here, as well as Nan Menon?
They are both here, as well as Ms. Dolan.
I saw Ms. Dolan, okay. I think I see Nan, but I don't see Mr. Smith. Oh, there he is, okay. Oh, I see why I don't see him. There's a big guy sitting in front of you.
In addition to the report, there was also the question raised by Mr. Reagan at the previous, previous hearing concerning whether we had the ability to use the Swim Club parking lot for our operations, which are also relevant in this report. We provided a lease for last year's use of the Swim Club facility, and I am now going to mark as A two in evidence, the lease with the figures redacted. And I don't think I need to circulate it, but there is a lease in place for the use of the Swim Club for this coming year. If any of the board members want to see it, I do have extra copies, but I will give the one to Mr. Reagan.
Mr. Lanford, is the, is the latest agreement the same as the one from two thousand twenty-one?
It is essentially the same, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
With the same cost?
Excuse me?
With the same fees?
I don't, I, for the rental?
Yeah.
I don't think that is relevant to, you know, it's between the Swim Club and the school as to what they're paying is.
That's, I, I would agree with that, yes.
In going through this, and, and like I said, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we spent at least two or three times with conferences with staff, and I had numerous conferences with the summer camp operators and Nan Menon, who was, is the operator of the school. And we also, in trying to come up with a protocol, tried to take advantage of the individuals who operate and run the school, the principal and other people, because there has not been a problem with the day-to-day operations of the school. In coming up with these protocols, a couple things were very important, and I will just sort of highlight them unless the board wants to have Ms. Dolan review them, and if, if you do, I can call her up here and she can review the protocols that are in her report. But in, in essence, we felt that the first thing that needed to be done was to educate the parents of the attendees about the arrival and drop-off and the pickup and drop, pickup and departure of the children. Although, and it was on the website for the previous hearing, the camp brochure dealt with the issue, we felt it needed to be dealt with more clearly, and to also, at the beginning of camp, reinforce to the parents what the procedures are for pickup and drop-off. The second thing that we felt was very important, and I'm sort of trying to highlight the report, is to stagger the pickup and drop-off of the children. The primary pickup time, there are some early drop-offs and some later drop-offs, which are not the big problem. The big problem was that the bulk of the children came between eight and nine with no assigned times.
Exactly.
Okay, so what we decided to do was to divide the pickup, or I'm sorry, the drop-off of the children with a certain group coming between eight and eight-thirty, and another group coming between eight-thirty and nine, so we don't hopefully have one big rush of children at the same time. Obviously, we also have to work out where some parents have two, two children or three children that belong in different categories, and we will work out at what time those children come. We also tried to define where the children are dropped off, so it is clear and we can have a free flow of moving traffic on the site. Another thing that we agreed to do and look into, which may or may not be necessary, is to find a bus hub. In other words, to find a site off, off the campus where parents can drop off the children and then can be bussed into the campus, so that would reduce the number of parents that are coming to the site. We are looking into that, and that will be part of our evaluation as to whether it becomes absolutely necessary or optional, and we may still want to do it. The other major component is that we are going to have a individual, and we've been in touch with the police department already, to be there every morning, all day, for the first month of the school year, or the summer camp year, to monitor and to help control and direct traffic. He is not going to direct traffic on Cedar Grove Lane, but he is going to direct traffic at the driveways, to make sure that the, the parents are going into the proper driveway. If one of the driveways, which is the, the school driveway, which is the main driveway, is backed up, they can direct the parents to drop the children off in the other driveway, to keep the traffic moving. The other issue that came up was that there are some parents that chose not to follow directional signs, and having an officer there, I think, will ameliorate that situation. The other issue that came up in the testimony is that evidently some parents of children who worked there, the teenagers, would stop and drop their children off on the street and have them walk up, which is, doesn't make sense. So by having an officer there, we can eliminate all of those problems. The other thing that was critical, too, is we were to evaluate whether these things work, whether there should be adjustments to these protocols, and what we agreed to do was to have new traffic counts done after the third or fourth, during the third or fourth week of the summer camp. Usually, the first two weeks where people are coming in, things are usually, as they are when you start school, are a little bit hectic, so we want to get everybody into the right routine, but then to do counts and to do an analysis. We would conduct the traffic counts, we would advise the township when the traffic counts were going to be conducted, so that if they wanted to be present, they can be present. And then based on those analyses, we can evaluate if things are working, if they're not working, what needs to be, you know, changed. And it may be that things are working, but there are other improvements that can be implemented. We also agreed to have some drone flight videos done of the operation, so that we can have, or the board can have, the ability to see what is going on there. And by doing that, I, I think we are addressing what I perceive to be the major concern that this board had at the, at the hearing. I think all of these protocols, by putting them in place, will, you know, regulate traffic on the property so that it will flow efficiently. After we do that, then we will come back here and have the board, you know, review the reports, review the comments of, and suggestions of either Ms. Dolan, or Mr. Mazzi, or Mr. Healy, or whoever, and then we can sort of wrap this thing up and finally, but I think to try to wrap it up now with information that probably is not exact, probably doesn't make sense, it's not in the best interest of the school, it's not, or the summer camp, and it's not in the best interest of the board. So I would hope that what we can do, and the board would consider, is to entertain a request for a temporary use permit, rather than the use variance, which would allow us to continue to operate while we go through this process. As a condition of the temporary use permit, we would have to adhere to the protocols here and agree to come back to the board at a date to be determined by Mr. Healy, so that we can wrap this thing up. Ms. Dolan is here, if she, if anybody has any questions of her, I'm sure, as I was babbling on, most of you were reading the report, not listening to me, but that's okay. But we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
The, let me say this. Based upon the testimony that I've listened to, and the situation that I witnessed when I went over there, I think it is a tribute to Mr. Smith that no one's been injured in that parking lot. And I, I see the, the protocol issues that you are focusing on, and I think they're the right ones. My problem is this. I think Galen Smith is a pretty capable guy. I also think that Nan is also a very capable person. My concern is that, for a long-term solution, my concern is going to be what happens when Galen Smith passes this on to somebody else, and they're not as squared away. That's going to leave me with a, a use variance in place that is going to really turn out to be a problem for the town to, to deal with. So, so what I, I, what I'm going to be looking for, I think, at the end of all this, is protocols which can be, can be, I want to say quantify, but that's not even the right word. They got to be, they got to be things that people that aren't as smart as Galen Smith are going to be able to deal with, so that we don't create a problem downstream.
Well, I, I think by establishing the protocols and making them a condition of approval, then it is incumbent upon whoever is operating this facility to, to comply with those conditions of approval. If they don't, they could be subject to summonses, or they can be subject to somebody bringing a cause of action, because they are not complying with the conditions of approval that were imposed by this board. It's just like if, if the.
One of your cases, another one of your cases.
No, no, my clients don't do anything like that, you know that. No, it, it, it's just like if, if a building has an occupancy limit, and, you know, and it's violated. It's supposed to be two hundred people in the building, and then, you know, somebody shows up and there's three hundred people in the building. There are remedies for that, including summonses, fines, and perhaps even stopping the operation, depending if it's, if it's a constant violation. So there are mechanisms for the enforcement of these conditions, which may be these conditions or maybe different conditions as we go through this process. But I think that if the board would act favorably on the ultimate request of the use variance, the board should impose all of the conditions that would be generated as a result of these studies, as a result of the recommendations of Ms. Dolan and Mr. Mazzi in collaboration with the township staff, and in collaboration with my client.
Okay, if, does anybody else, I, I mean, I feel like I'm hogging the, the stage here. Does anybody else have any things that they want to say to Mr. Lanford at this point?
I just want to.
And ask him any questions, or have Ms. Dolan talk? Do we want to have her get up and, and, and read the memo, or explain, explain the memo further? I don't think we need that, but I, I'm just, I'm just wondering whether there's anyone here on the, on the board that has questions or comments for Mr. Lanford at this point?
I do. I just want to clarify. So, Mr. Lanford, are you asking for this evening to have a temporary measure put in place so that you can collect data for, for these proposed procedures? I just want to be clear on that.
What your ordinance allows is that this board can grant what is known as a temporary use variance for a period of up to six months, which would take us through the summer camp. And that temporary use variance would expire after the six months. During that time, we will collect the data, we will have further discussions with staff, and then we will come back here to continue our application for the permanent use variance.
A phoenix will rise from the ashes, yes.
So we will come back to ask for the permanent use variance. This gets the summer camp running this summer, it gets the, everybody the opportunity, you know, God willing, that we don't have any of these COVID issues, that we can see it run the way it should normally be operated, so we can evaluate all of the, all of the concerns about pickup and drop-off.
So, I have a few questions, but I think, I think I'd like to ask Darren, if you have any comments on what they've, you've had a chance to review this driveway plan, do you have any comments or, or questions?
Well, the first question I would have is, I know the applicant's willing to do count, I just want to get on the record, would the counts be for both driveways or just the school?
We, if we're using both driveways, it would have to be for both driveways, that's the only way it would make sense.
Okay. My next question, occupancy loads did come up. I don't know the occupancy of this school, but does the camper, does the camp exceed that, or?
The, the school, when it received its approval, had a maximum occupancy of three hundred and thirty students. Based on the testimony of Nan and also of, of Mr. Smith, the numbers at the summer camp, and again, non-pandemic, averaged between two fifty and two eighty. And again, summer camp is different, because some weeks, you know, there's more kids in, in the camp than other weeks. Parents don't necessarily send their kids to the camp the entire summer, so the number fluctuates, but it's in the two fifty to two eighty range.
So if, if this board was to approve this temporary use, you would agree to a limit of two hundred and eighty?
That, there will be no problem.
Okay. And you could provide some type of documentation that demonstrates that?
We can provide the enrollment for each week, we can provide that information.
I would want to see that, because I, I felt that that was somewhat vague during the testimony, there were no, nothing to support anything, so I would be, I would look forward to that.
We would, we'd be happy to do that.
I hijacked it, Darren, you want to give anymore?
Sure. Let me just say, I had one more note here, bear with me. So, I understand the report and where we're going with it. I guess one option I would like to bring out there, too, is, and I believe Mr. Healy will speak to it as well, if during the first week or two, the police officer on-site notices on safe conditions, there's the possibility that we would want this application to at least come to the T R C to work out an immediate issue.
I, I agree. I mean, that, that's the intent of this, is to try to make sure everything works smoothly, and if there are problems, I, I don't think we have to wait for week three or four for somebody to pick up the phone and say, hey, we got an issue. The police officer that's there should be, should contact either Mr. Healy or, or you, Darren, and say, we got a problem, this is the problem, and then we'll have to figure out how to address it. That's the whole intent of this, is to try to come up with protocols that work.
Yeah, and I would think, again, if the board was inclined, I think, you know, a wording of a condition that they need to fine-tune the plan with the T R C Technical Review Committee, which includes the Bureau of Traffic Safety of the Police Department, and that they would be, you know, frankly, we're. they would be, you know, frankly, working with staff as the, as the summer goes on. If there are some adjustments that need to be made, the Police Department obviously should have that. I think it goes without saying, should be able to have the ability to tell them that they need to modify some of their procedures. I'm not saying it would come to this, but in absolute worst case scenario, if conditions are unsafe, the Bureau of Traffic Safety can say, you need to shut down if, if, if it's untenable. So I, I think something along those lines, again, if the board is inclined, should be in the condition.
Since this is really an unusual request, because I've been on this board a long time, I would, I'd like to hear from our attorney if this is a workable situation.
In terms of the temporary use permit, yes. I mean, it is provided for in the township's ordinance. It does authorize the zoning board to, to grant such a, a use, a temporary use permit. And I think, you know, based on the conditions that have been proposed so far, I think it's, I think it's workable.
And I have two other questions. And the one, I, I did bring this to your attention to give you the opportunity to try to answer it. And the one question, I know you, you know what that question's going to be. Verizon is putting a cell tower on the Swim Club parking lot. Condition of that approval is they need to remove some of those parking spaces.
Right.
Do you know the timing of when that work might start?
We, we were in touch with the Swim Club. There was a representative here this evening. Their agreement with Verizon is that none of their work will happen during the summer. So the construction of that tower will not impact what we're doing because they're not allowed to do construction during the summer.
Okay.
Because obviously it impacts the Swim Club also.
Okay. Again, I would say that if, I mean, if, 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 for whatever reason, construction starts, that we're going to have to talk.
Yeah.
If, if, again, if unforeseen, you know, if, if what's-
And, and if there's a problem on, on Cedar Grove Lane that's unforeseen, that the road buckles, we have to talk. I mean, obviously, common sense is that if there's a problem, we have to address it and talk about it.
It's April right now. If all of a sudden Verizon starts showing up with trucks in August, yeah.
Yeah.
And the last question, again, this was, you know, one of the other, you know, we've been talking about traffic, but one of the other issues that had been raised by some members of the public was the amplified sound, the DJ.
You stole my question. Keep going.
It was one of, well, I'm just offering that as a, I guess as a general question to, if that's something that the board wants to consider as a condition and what the applicant's response to that might be.
I, if you want me to respond?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
Okay. We are aware of and that there were a couple of complaints with regards to noise, which were addressed. I think that sound amplification with kids in a summer camp is something that's fairly common. I also think that since this property is in a residential zone, that the operator and the individuals who, the employees, have to be sensitive to the fact that we are in a residential zone. I think that based on what they have heard last year when the complaint was raised and what they have heard here now, is that they have to be very cognizant of the fact that while they, if they are allowed to use amplification, it can't be used to the extent that it imposes a burden on or a distraction to the residents. And I think those things can be done. There are, again, also statutes that involve noise, and I, I don't want to talk about, you know, what they are and whether, you know, the noise that came out of that facility on a given day violated a statute or didn't. This is a situation of neighbors trying to get along.
That's right.
And, and so I would think that, that if, we would like to continue this sound amplification because I think it's appropriate, but I also know that if there is a problem with that, that goes on to the issue of the overall use variance and may impact that approval. And I think my client is aware of it and the operator's aware of it.
And I, I think that that's the way, the way why I want to approach it. I want, that's why I asked if, if the applicant was in the audience tonight because I, I wanted him to be part of this conversation. And my, my thinking is that we don't want to, we don't want to impose a condition now because that all gets into statute rather than neighbors. And I would much rather see him being judicious in the application of, of amplification. But we'll, we'll see where all that goes. I, I don't think we want to have anything included in there other than maybe something that would be reasonable.
And, and I, I think it's clear that we've got the message and, and we understand the message. So hopefully, when we come back, that's not an issue.
Yeah. Good. Now, I, I think everybody on the board has had a chance to ask questions, as are, are professionals. My question is, is there anyone in the audience that would like to get up and say something about this application and how they feel about it that is opposed to it? I don't need to have people come up and, and do a little cheerleading for this. I just want to find out if there are people in the audience that have concerns that have not been addressed at this point. Okay. Well, then we've come to a, yes. Please come up to the microphone and speak directly into it.
Can you just raise your hand first and you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Amen.
If you could just provide your name and address?
Okay. Dennis Sicari, 151 Cedar Grove Lane.
Yes, speak right.
I live directly across from the school. I've never come before this board to complain, but I can tell you, over the past several summers with that summer camp running, it, it absolutely creates quality of life issues with the noise that comes out of that camp, with, with the way the kids are monitored. Everything's, all the activities, most of the activities are done up in front of the school, not behind the school. So it absolutely adversely impacts the quality of life for the neighborhood. Two, on any given day, traffic is an issue. Traffic is problematic. I can never, if I want to go out in the morning because of the way the traffic queues to make their left-hand turns into the school, I can't make a left turn out of my driveway. It's totally unsafe. And that, that, that's now going to continue, not only during the school year, but it's going to continue throughout the year for me. So when I want to get out of my driveway in the morning to be safe, I have to make a right-hand turn and navigate around Western Road, down Elizabeth Avenue, and back out to Eastern Avenue. If I'm coming up heading north in the afternoon on, on Cedar Grove Lane, and I want to make a left-hand turn into my driveway, that becomes a nightmare because even if someone, because the traffic queues again, and if someone wants to give me the opportunity and be courteous to turn into my driveway, people are obnoxious and go around and come through the, the, the safety lane there that's, that's at the foot of my driveway. And there's been several times where I've almost been broadsided because people don't have the patience. So I think traffic has to clearly be monitored and watched. Someone has, has to definitely facilitate getting traffic in and out of that driveway, and it has to prevent people making, you know, wrong turns into traffic coming out of that parking lot. And my other concern is when they start construction in the Swim Club, what happens to all that excess traffic, or the parking, or, or the drop, drop off? How's that going to be addressed?
I think that that's something that, that they are going to be focusing on as time goes on here. I think that's not something that we can clairvoyantly resolve at this point.
You know, and just to say this, you know, I've never been before this sport, but it's definitely become a quality of life issue, especially in the summer. And there was one night, you know, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, where they had activities at that school, and they had kids running out unsupervised at 1:00 in the morning where I had to call the police to come in. I don't want that going on. What has, what goes on there should be clearly monitored.
Yep, I agree. Yeah.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, if I can just ask, sir, sir, just one question. When you mentioned the noise, is it, is it the sound of the children and/or is it, is it the amplified sound and/or the DJ? What, what-
It's everything, Mark. It's, you know, it's, all the activities. For me, living on Cedar Grove Lane and the way people navigate Cedar Grove Lane, having all those activities up front, it's a life safety issue for having kids so close to the road and having activities up there. Everything should be taking place behind that school.
So, okay.
So the noise is very intrusive. I never complain. I never come before the board. I'm adversely impacted. I know kids have to live and enjoy and be happy. But there has to be some control and people have to be mindful of the neighbors also.
So, so the reason I'm asking that question is, kids are going to be kids. So-
Absolutely. I agree.
So if kids are going to yell while they're playing, they're going to yell. But things like if somebody's with a bullhorn versus somebody with, with a PA system playing music-
Absolutely.
Those are things that potentially the board could talk about. So you're, you're saying you've heard all th-
All, all of, all the above. Again, I live right across the street. So, and again, I'm not trying to be obnoxious about this. There's got to be a fair balance.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything that they'd like to say or add? Yes. Why don't you come up? No, no, we have to speak from there regardless of what you're going to say. We have to get your name and address.
And if you could just raise your right hand before, do you swear any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you just, your name and address, please.
My name is, is this on? Can you hear me? My name is Deirdre Austin, 378 Bowler Court, Piscataway, New Jersey. Now, I'm not on the opposing team, I guess if you wanted to make teams, but I do work at the camp. I am assistant director, and I am totally confused because safety is not an issue. It has never been an issue.
Frank, she's employed by the, by the camp.
Yeah, I, I-
Yeah, I don't know because I wasn't at the last one, so but I can't have-
If she's a camp representative, then either I'm going to need to call her as a witness or, yeah, so I don't think she should-
Not to decide what you want to do.
Yeah. I, I think it's probably not necessary to have her speak at this point.
Yeah, as an employee of the applicant-
Okay.
Any, any testimony, statements need to be made.
So when we have the gentleman with your friend over here?
No, 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 no.
Vince.
Vince.
I can stop, but you can speak to me a certain way.
Before you proceed, if, because you're employed by the applicant-
I understand.
Any testimony needs to be presented through the applicant's attorney?
No problem. No problem.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and just if I could clarify, I think for, with the reason for what the chairman was suggesting. I think the board can see that there are folks here in support of the camp, and we've had applications in the past where it's just one person after another saying, this is, you're here. The board can see that you're here in support of the camp. So we, we don't need, we don't need person after person saying it's a wonderful camp. That doesn't help. If there are some additional things that the board needs to think about to make an informed decision, that's what the board needs.
Yes, ma'am, that's standing up in the back there. Yes, come up and, right.
Do you swear any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
I'm Tara Jordan McKenny, 115 Dunham's Corner Road, East Westwood, New Jersey. I'm a parent, a Rutgers alumni, and I work in Air, Coke, Pub, Olive, J&amp;J. So I've seen the traffic up and down that road for years. I have two sons that are now be 10 and 13 who've been in the camp for many years. And I want to go back to the comment about the summer of 2021. The first three weeks, I will say, it was cumbersome because they were taking the temperature of the kids. But I have to admit that, oh, the camp realized that and merely made the changes where there was no traffic issues at all. And I have to be honest with you. I'm the type of parent who's with my laptop, my headset. I'm conducting global meetings in my car sometimes because I'm, you know, I'm pressed for time having meetings in India, China, wherever around the world for the work that I do. And I can sit in that parking lot and I can have a conversation where I don't hear the kids' noise. I don't hear the amplified music. And I work for a Fortune 500 company, and no one's hearing that sound, and my windows are absolutely down. During the time of those first three weeks of the summer 21, from June to the first week of July, there was traffic inside the school, but the traffic was not on the road. The traffic on that road gets crazy based on the intersection of Route 18 and 287. If Route 18 is backed up for any reason, whether it's university or because of the rain, weather issues, constructions by the university, and also vice versa on 287 where north and south, all the roads on Eastern Avenue and supporting roads will always be flooded full of congested traffic. It is not the school. I go down that road sometimes to do a crossway to be going to go to work, and most of the times, nine times out of 10, I'm at work by 8:30, 8:45 the latest, especially during the summer times. I'm there, arriving there between 8:30. I may sit at the parking lot at 10 o'clock, 10 a.m. in the, in the morning. And sometimes I'll arrive at 3:00 and sit in the parking lot on calls, doing my work till about 5:00. The amplification of the music is not loud. If you go in the back of the school, you will hear it, but you're not hearing it to the point where it's all over. You can hear it down to Starbucks and down the, you know, nine and a quarter of a mile down the road. I think the camp has, really has understanding of what it is to keep everything contained. In regards to the children who do play at the camp, they're the ages of three, four, five, seven, up to eight years old at the front, who are playing a little bit of kickball. So you will hear laughters of the children. The older kids are in the back or they're in the area playing basketball, and nine times out of 10, the children are coming from school trips. And by the time the kids come from the school trips, the parents are waiting to pick them up and they go home. In regards to the comment about the 1 a.m., one time during the summer, the kids who are between seventh and eighth grade are allowed to spend the night at the camp with parent supervisions, with adult supervisions, and their pickup is at 12:00. I'm not sure what 1:00 comes into play because everything is evacuated and done and cleaned up, but it's one time a year.
Okay, we get it.
Thank you. I just want to be truthful about that. Thank you.
All right. Okay. I think we've had enough participation by the audience. So really, the question that I have, I'm going to ask my attorney this, is what do we do next? Where do we go? Are, are we going to, do we have something to, we don't have a resolution. Do we simply adjourn for the evening and then have a, have a resolution prepared based upon, I think maybe what we have to do is, is vote on whether or not we want to allow this?
Correct. It would be, it would be as any other application that's before the board. Once you've, you know, exhausted your discussion with regards to, to what's been presented by the applicant, I think it's appropriate for you to, you know, make a decision. And based on everything, the, the testimony and statements from, from Mr. Lanford tonight, as well as staff and, and board members, I've got a whole list of conditions that obviously, depending upon which way it goes, would be reflected in a, in a resolution.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a, a resolution?
You may-
Then I'll make one. I move that we grant the applicant Cedar Hill Prep Summer Camp, that's not the right name, Cedar Hill Holdings, a temporary use- Permit that will reflect the terms and conditions set forth in the, the driveway operations report for Cedar Hill Summer Camp, as well as the additional terms and conditions discussed here this evening, all of which shall be laid out in the resolution to be prepared by counsel for the zoning board. And I guess that's it unless somebody thinks we should add something else to that. Does anybody have any, any further comments on that? Mark, what do you think?
I mean, I think you covered it generally. Frank will prepare the draft resolution and for your memorialization at another meeting.
Yep. Okay.
I think you need a second. I think you need a second.
Yes, I need a second. If we get a second.
A second.
Chair of the seat?
Yes.
Richard Prokhanik?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
I'm going to vote no.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
And Jean, Elizabeth Clarkin, sorry, your proper name.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I also think that since tonight was also the scheduled hearing for the underlying application for the site plan, we ought to carry that application. I will grant the board an extension of time, and when we decide to rehear the underlying, I'm sorry, not site plan, use variance application, we will then renotice for that so that everybody will get the appropriate notice.
And I might suggest that we try to do that as early as possible, maybe in the fall, so we're not, we're not backed up against summer schedule again.
I, again, I'm hoping that we can get all of our work done within the first month of the camp, get everything to the town quickly thereafter, and then, and then get scheduled to try to resolve that.
So just to, so through September for the--
Extension of time?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll give it to you in writing.
All right, thank you.
Well, that's all the business we have for tonight. I'm going to move that we adjourn. Oh, no, wait.
We have an executive session.
Oh, we do?
Very brief.
All right. Yeah. Thank you.